Good morning, everyone. Like to call this regular meeting for March ninth, twenty twenty-three to order. If you can please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance and salute to the state flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisal whether liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of the nation. This is a symbol of perfect friendship among united cultures.
Thank you. So, moving on to the next item of the agenda, it's gonna be the approval of the regular meeting agenda.
So move.
Second.
So have a motion by Commissioner Brown, have a second by Commissioner Billings. Do we have any discussion?
Oh, no.
No discussion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
They did something to both of us, apparently. I had to have Crystal help me do it.
So moving on to the next item of the agenda is gonna be public input. During this portion of our meeting, we welcome your suggestions and want to hear from, want to hear your concerns. This is not a question and answer period. Speakers will be limited to five minutes. Any individual who would like to discuss an item in more depth may request to be placed on a future agenda. The request forms under the county manager's office. Do we have anyone for public speaking? Yes, sir. Come on.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Dusty Hunt. I'm a member of the Grant Soil and Water Conservation District. Grant County and the Grant Soil and Water District co-sponsor the Emergency Watershed Program. The county manager indicated that she needed the Grant Soil and Water District to step up and take the leadership role in this partnership. We met yesterday and agreed that we would do just that. The Natural Resources Conservation Service has identified sixty properties in Grant County that have been damaged by floods severely enough to threaten life and property. Also, through the Natural Resources Conservation Service, there are three million dollars available to pay at least seventy-five percent of the repairs needed to, to make these people whole. It's incumbent upon both of our entities, Grant County and the Grant Soil and Water District, to make sure this, these dollars come to Grant County, to our residents, and we make these people who have been damaged, give them an opportunity to repair their property. We will be meeting with Mr. Voykovich Monday to organize ourselves into an effective team, and, and we'll go from there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Brown. Do we have anyone else for, for public input? Yes, sir. Order.
Good morning. This might be a little unusual. I have, my name is Tim Hyer, and I'm a pastor at Crosspoint Church, just right up here on one eighty, right on the outskirts of Silver City. Been here about a little less than two years, and I have nothing to complain about. I have nothing to promote. I have nothing to advertise, other than any contact or interaction I've had with the county has been wonderful and first-class out of this building, whether it's the sheriff's office or the assessor's office. Haven't had to do anything with the treasurer's office, but Patrick's been wonderful, too. And so, any way I can help trying to get to know people here in the community, and just wanna encourage you guys and pray for you guys, and I think the best is yet to come for Grant County. So, I wish you guys the best.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. You want?
I'm sorry. I thought it was gonna be at the end of the meeting. Hello, everybody. I'm Joe Griswold. Chuck Johnson and I own the property next door to the county, and I don't know if this is the proper forum to bring it up, but I've tried a bunch of times from sheriff to sheriff to supervisor, supervisor to supervisor, to actually, we had a meeting with your attorney out of Las Cruces, but what they did is just send me back that the county bought this property. I don't know if you know this, but originally, this building was a TGNY building, and that all that property out in front and all the property to the side is common parking, common area for all of us. And involved in that was the egress and aggress and egress to come in and out of our property and have it available. We have a commercial piece of property, and what has basically happened is that when we first got here, it was no problem. Everything was fine. I wasn't, I thought it would be a great deal. Then they moved the sheriff's office up, and the sheriff's office put their cars up against the building. Still no problem, because I have easement in between our property in case I ever sell that, that they could bring trucks in to deliver or whatever, because that's a pretty good piece of commercial property. But what ended up happening was the sheriff started parking on this side, and then all of a sudden, this goes back to, was it Vivian Weaver? Chris, was it you that I talked to years ago? And showed you that they had trucks all over that lot out there that were from the police dogs and emergency vehicles, some four-wheelers and whatever. And finally, I said, I can't, it's not that I don't want you to do this. I can't let you do this, or pretty soon it's yours. Well, what ended up happening is between our property, there's an easement that I can get out. They started parking in front of the easement. They put a chain link six foot with cantina wire on top and cut my easement off on my side of the easement. Now, if I sell that land, you can't get in that side at all. And, and that you have, what, what has happened is it's grad- and by the way, that fence out there, half of it, when we had it surveyed, is on my property. It's on, it's like six to twelve inches on my property. Then they put a gate in front of it that stops any. Then in front of the gate, they put four-wheelers out, and then in front of the four-wheelers, they put a garbage can. And if you'll go out there right now, there's garbage all over. I mean, I, every time I come up here, I usually have to go clean my lot. So what I'm getting at, at one, I think I talked to you years ago about if you were interested in purchasing the land, it made all the sense in the world to me, and we weren't trying to make a huge profit out of it. We're, if we sold it right now, we would probably get about what we put into it, right at what we put into it. I gave appraisal. I mean, I, I didn't know exactly what to do, except that they told me, come back and bring us appraisal. I went to six appraisers. Nobody wants to screw with the government, because they said the government's gonna just take it. They're gonna do what they wanna do.
Okay, Mr. Griswold, you have one minute.
What's that?
You have one minute.
Okay, I'm sorry. Let me finish it up then. What I'm saying is, all I want is our rights of ownership that we originally started out with the deal. If the fence is on our land, want the fence removed. If those cars are stopping egress or ingress into that property, just move them out in front of this place where, you know, this is common area. It's not on easement. But anyway, and I don't know if I'd get to be put on an agenda or whatever, but I kinda wanted to explain to people, because when I'm talking to people, everybody's just going, mm-hmm. And the next thing I know, from what I understand, they're talking about putting up another gate out there to stop the easement farther down, like where the garbage cans are. And I just want it to stop. I don't wanna get in a full-fledged lawsuit. And I think you'll go back to the original statement. I, I brought this to Zamora and-
Okay, Mr. Griswold, thank you. But five minutes are on. The only thing I can tell you is this is not a question and answer period, but if you'd like to get put on a future agenda, please reach out to the county manager.
That's, that's what I'm gonna do. Okay, thank you very much. Thanks for listening to me.
Thank you, sir.
Do we have anyone else for public speaking? Okay, we'll be moving on. Next item of the agenda is gonna be proclamations. Gonna be consideration of proclamation declaring April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month.
Chairman of approval of the proclamation declaring April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month.
Second.
Do you have a motion by Commissioner Brown? I have a second by Commissioner Billings. Do we have any discussion? If you can read the proclamation there.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Whereas in the United States, April is Sexual Assault Awareness Month and a time to draw attention to the prevalence of sexual assault and educate individuals and communities about how to prevent it. Sexual harassment, abuse, and assault are widespread problems. In the United States alone, nearly one in five women and one in sixty-seven men have been raped at some time in their lives, and one in four girls and one in twenty boys is sexually abused by the age of seventeen. And whereas preventing sexual assault, abuse, and harassment is of the utmost importance, so we can ensure that less people go through these horrific violations. To build strong communities that work together to prevent sexual assault, abuse, and harassment, we must focus on building an equitable world where people have equal power and autonomy over their bodies and lives. And whereas each of us has the power to change that behavior, and together we can make a difference to build inclusive, safe, and respectful communities that thrive together. And whereas, twenty twenty-three marks the twenty-second anniversary of Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and the theme of this year's campaign is Drawing Connections. Prevention requires equity. We can build communities that prevent sexual harassment, abuse, and assault by building equitable power and bodily autonomy, intervening when we see harmful behaviors and promoting communities that value inclusion, safety, and respect. Now, therefore, at the Grant, Grant County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim the month of April twenty twenty-three to be Sexual Assault Awareness Month and urge our citizens to work together to eliminate sexual assault from our communities.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. I know I saw Chelsea here, so if you guys wanna come up. Okay, so now we'll be moving on to presentations. We have a presentation, High Desert Humane Society Annual Report. Ms. August.
Good morning. Thank you. Heidi August, President of the High Desert Humane Society. Good morning, commissioners and staff. I'd like to go over the annual report of animal intake for twenty twenty-two. You should have received some handouts. So the first one we'll just take a look at is the annual animal intake for Grant County of twenty twenty-two. It has the full breakdown of impound animals versus stray versus owner turn-in and then return to owners. I'll just run through the numbers at the bottom, the totals. There were seventy-three dogs impounded, a hundred and forty-five strays, a hundred and sixty-five owner turn-ins for a total of three hundred and eighty-three. Ninety-four of the dogs were returned to owner. There were twelve cats impounded, two hundred and eleven strays, a hundred and fifty-four owner turn-in for a total of three hundred and seventy-seven cats coming in from the county, and only two were returned to owner. Any questions on those numbers? Total impound fees collected from the county were two thousand five hundred and forty-three, and licenses sold were six thousand five hundred and fifty-six dollars and thirty-five cents. The society as a whole, we adopted out three hundred and ninety-nine animals and returned two hundred and six to their owners. And of those adoptions going out, there were two hundred and thirty-one that went to Grant County residents. And we issued out one thousand ninety spay and neuter assistance coupons. You should also have the breakdown for yearly comparisons, and I won't go over those numbers. It might be easiest to take a look at the graph to see how the numbers have gone up and down over the years, and that we're running, dogs and cats are running pretty consistent, but they are back down slightly. So I, I wish I had some way to track the statistics as to whether that means there's less dogs out there, dogs and cats out there that need to come into the shelter, or whether it was affected by animal control or, or exactly what. I, I, I don't know, unfortunately. I also included a graph just to compare the city and county intake. They're pretty consistent, running up and down similarly. Any questions on that portion? Couple things, other things I'd like to share quickly. Commissioner Ponse and I spoke, and I spoke with the sheriff here. We are gonna try to schedule a meeting with, between the Humane Society and the Sheriff's Department to discuss how things can work together. I know taking over animal control is sort of a new thing for the county. Although the Sheriff's Department has doing, has been doing the best that they can, but, so that we can work together and make sure that our policies and procedures are consistent with the county policy and procedures and how we can work together on that. So we'll try to get a meeting scheduled to meet. Something else I just wanted to mention, if you notice, the owner turn-in numbers are kind of high. Of course, part of that, I think, is post-COVID. But just some of the things that the shelters trying to do to help people keep their pets. Of course, we have our HALT program, our Spay and Neuter Assistance Program, which provides financial assistance to get your animals spayed or neutered, and that is regardless of income. However, you may remember House Bill fifty-seven that passed in the state where the state charges pet food manufacturers a fee for their label. Well, we received nine thousand dollars from the state low-cost spay and neuter program. So now, if you come in and wanna get a coupon from us, if you can provide proof of limited income, then we can match your coupon with state money, and that will pay most of the time a hundred percent of the spay and neuter. So that's one of the things that we're doing. We also provide our reduced-fee vaccination clinics on the second Saturday of every month. It will be this coming Saturday at the shelter. It's nine to noon, and that, the vaccinations are provided by one of the local veterinarians. They donate their time, and the cost of vaccinations is less than what you would pay at the veterinarian office, and you don't need to pay an office visit fee, so that helps with vaccinations. Also, we had received a grant from Albertsons, and because their motto is to feed the hungry, what we are doing is we take dog food and cat food and bag it into Ziploc bags and take it to the commons, and it is distributed through their food pantry distributions three times a month. So we're trying to help people be able to continue to feed their animals. We also, in the wintertime, we have our free bags of straw that we give out for people that do have pets that have to stay outside in the hopes that they can help keep, help provide better shelter for them. And also, if you've adopted from the Humane Society, you are entitled to a three, thirty-minute session with the Wilderness Kennel Club where they provide training assistance to help with things like body training and sitcom stay-type stuff. So those are some of the things we're trying to do to help people keep their animals. Another thing I did wanna share with you is just some information about our thrift store. We do, the thrift store provides a hundred percent of the money for our spay and neuter program. It also has provided a lot of things for the shelter. We've put in a new heating and cooling system. We've built seven new outdoor runs. We're looking at redoing part of our parking lot. But I just wanted to share, too, so something that I don't think very many people know about is how much we put back into the community in other ways. For instance, excess books we take to SWAG, which is another nonprofit supporting youth programs. We also take hardware and building supplies that we have in excess to heat and resell and repair and donate it to them. We provide jackets, blankets, and sheets to spin in the SOS Overnight Shelter. We provide toiletries that come in and excess clothing to the Gospel Mission, and they go through the bags that we provide to them, and then what they can't, don't have room for, can't store, they donate to a place called Cherry Shoes and Clothes out of Texas, which takes the clothing to third-world countries. They also take in medical supplies like ankle braces and crutches and walkers and things like that. And we even help support the local artist community, because we have a lot of broken glass and ceramics, and they love things like that to build more. Just another thing I wanted to remind everybody, we are no longer taking aluminum cans. For many, many years, we took in aluminum cans. It was a fundraiser for us, but the inconsistency of places to be able to take and sell them, it was not becoming profitable for us anymore, so we're no longer taking aluminum cans. We still are headed towards building our adoption center. There are some logistics things that we need to work out, like for one, I'm sure you're aware of, a year or so ago, we had one of the caverns, the mining caverns, from coming off of Austin Hill that was on our property cave in. And so we've been working with the BLM on mapping some of those caverns underneath, so we need to confirm that where we wanna put the new building is not over any kind of cavern that could cave in. We're also working with them on, on putting in a bat entrance to help, or reestablish the bat population. The other logistic of building a new adoption center is the water issue. We're gonna try to meet with the city. We are on city water up there, but we have extremely low water pressure, and to run a hose just to clean or run, we can't do dishes at the same time, because we don't have enough water pressure, so we'll have to work that out. And one other exciting thing that I'd like to share is twenty twenty-three, we're gonna be fifty years old. We will be celebrating our fiftieth birthday in twenty twenty-three. We're getting some new T-shirts printed up, and just what we'll do in September, I'm not really sure if we'll have some sort of open house or a party or an event, but we are, are looking into how we can help get the community to help us celebrate our fiftieth birthday. Any questions on any of that?
Questions?
Yeah.
No? Thank you. Thanks for everything you do.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Heidi.
Moving on to the next presentation is gonna be the Annual Extension Programmatic Efforts and Impact Report by Ms. Massengill and Ms. Baker.
Oh, someone may, may need to push a magic button.
It always happens this way. And it might just be me, actually, because I practice stuff and it works, and then when I'm in front of people, it just always knocks.
It's a button underneath the podium, maybe?
Um, the blue light is on. I don't know what that means.
Special? Is there something on sale?
Give us something. I will ask for them back.
You will?
Thank you.
We can't write in the, we can't color in the-
Well, you can. Okay, so this is something I just got trained in.
Something was happening when you hit that button.
Okay, now we're in business. My name is Jessica Swat-Massengill, and I have been serving as the AG and 4H agent for Grant County for the past seven years. I would like to introduce Lauren Baker, our new 4H and Family Consumer Science Agent, who began the position in June of twenty twenty-two. Lauren, who and her family resided in Grant County for most of her childhood, she attended school in Cliff and has since moved around the country doing various things. She comes to us with a Bachelor of Science in Psychology from CSU Pueblo. Her passion, personality, and love for her hometown has made her the right fit for the Family and Consumer Science Agent position. She has only been in the position for a short time, but has been busy attending trainings, conferences, and meetings in order to prepare her to meet the needs of Grant County clientele. Lauren is the only certified food manager cropper in four counties, and the Environment Department has been sending people to her to get certified. And she has been offering food manager tests to people in four counties that would have otherwise had to travel long distances to get their certification. Today, you'll be hearing about our major programming efforts that were made in twenty twenty-two and the strides that we have made thus far in twenty twenty-three.
The first program I implemented in the school systems was Germ Detective. So this is teaching our youth the importance of handwashing to prevent the spread of germs, which actually ties in food safety. So you can see the bacteria. This is at twelve PM. Then we have bacteria at one. Okay? Within an hour. And then at two PM, the amount of bacteria. So we're teaching kids the importance, especially with COVID flu season, it's important to get in and teach them the importance with warm water and soap, not just putting them under cold water. So you can see that there's a prevalence for it in the community. Okay, so as I went in to make it fun for the kids, we, I had a teddy bear. I would pass around a bear to, as an opener, and as the kids would pass it around. I also have, I have a flashlight there.
Spreading bacteria?
Oh, you can't hear me? I also have a bigger black light here. I don't know if we could plug it in somewhere. Or Jessica can use the handy-dandy flashlight.
It's just a check for scorpions, by the way.
But the fake germs glow under the black light, so the kids can see. And then we would go wash our hands, and they would come back, and it, it'll show if they don't get in all the good places. Then we would go outside and play tag. And as the child that was it, the germs, they join hands. So it shows how it rapidly produces.
Yeah, you have some. Not quite as much, but especially right there.
And although I did start with elementary, I was asked to come back to speak with our high school youth, because, let's face it, kids. And so that's to help the youth overcome past traumas and these they get to keep. So nobody reads the things that they write. However, as a mandated reporter, it is something that I would go in and teach the children, so. Kitchen creations with diabetes, it's a big thing in our community as well as living with chronic illness. So these are future programings that I cannot wait to get started. We've been doing clover bud, our little clover buds that are too young for 4-H. And we've been doing programs with them and baking classes with a sprinkle of mental health. So we do a lot of coloring as well in that and I can't wait to collaborate with the library this summer. This is my first one, so bear with me. I'll be back in a second.
Okay, so now I'm going to start on my programmatic efforts. We're going to talk about Jessica as the Agriculture Agent. In Grant County, agriculture programming falls into two categories, livestock production and profitability and urban horticulture and food insecurity. Under the livestock production and profitability category, the issue is New Mexico gross income from cattle and calves totaled 1.07 billion in 2021. The New Mexico inventory value of those cattle and calves decreased by over $1,000 per head, which is down 21% since 2018. Total inventory in New Mexico fell by 8% and Grant County has been categorized with worsening drought conditions ranging from severe to exceptional since 2020. The first half of 2022, drought conditions ranged from abnormally dry to severe drought. Then heavy rainfall caused flooding in the county. So profitability is a growing concern for cattle producers in New Mexico and in Grant County. So to answer that problem, I developed two cattle producer programs designed to address the concerns of profitability by Grant County cattle producers. Program number one, provide education to producers and employees on pre-parting cow management for healthy cows and calves, post-parting cow management for healthy cows and calves, dystocia, and proper technique for intervention for their cowherds to cut operating expenses. The second program focused on beef quality insurance, certification, and cow calf vaccination protocol, proper techniques during spring works, crew safety and efficiency, and the impact of caddying distribution on herd profitability. The result of the program was reached by 51 producers attending, 100% increased their knowledge and understanding of pre-parting cow management, post-parting cow management, proper caddying dystocia intervention, proper calf vaccination protocol, and impact of caddying distribution on herd profitability. 74% are more confident using proper techniques during spring works. 81% are more aware of crew safety and efficiency during spring works. Cattle producers can increase profitability and reduce production costs through the implementation of advice from teams of veterinarians and county extension agents supported by university specialists, and that's from a research article. So programs such as these are valuable to assist our producers to achieve increased profitability in their operations. Now we will discuss urban horticulture and food insecurity. The issue, according to the USDA, the average annual food at home prices were 3.5% higher in 2021 than in 2020. For context, the 20-year historical level of retail food price inflation is 2% per year, meaning the 2021 increase was 75, 75% above average. Over 10% of US households were food insecure at some point during 2021. In 2019, 12.4% of senior age New Mexico citizens faced food insecurity. Here in Grant County, the food insecurity rate is 15.3%. According to 2021 US Census data, 18% of Grant County residents out of the poverty line with a median income of a little over $39,000. In 2021, the highest percentage of the population in Grant County is over 65. So healthy, available, and affordable food is a growing concern for residents of Grant County. So to answer that, I developed two horticulture food insecurity programs designed to educate residents how to supplement their food supply with the use of growing their own food in their backyard to assist in saving money and reducing food insecurity. Program number one, which was titled Gardening 101, participants were taught garden planning, soil preparation, how to identify different types of soil, basic garden planting, how to test seed germination, variety selection, irrigation methods, companion planting, smart plant, and container gardening. Program number two was called Compost in a Bucket. Participants learned basic composting, the balance of carbon, nitrogen, items that can and cannot be composted, and they were encouraged to bring a bucket and some items to compost. The Extension Office also provided materials for composting so participants could go home with their own stack of compost in a bucket. Which, by the way, I have one at the office and somebody stole it.
Highly valuable.
And I even offered no questions asked if they brought it back. They didn't bring it back. I hope they enjoy my bucket of stuff. The results of this program, 37 residents attended the programs. Surveys were completed and evaluated. 100% increased their knowledge of soil preparation, how to identify different types of soil, how to test seed germination, make variety selections, understand basic composting principles, and the balance of nitrogen, carbon needed for proper decomposition, as well as what items can be composted versus those that cannot. 100% reported planning on using this knowledge gained from programs to start or continue to improve their backyard gardens. 97% increased their knowledge of how to make a garden plan and the different types of irrigation methods. 97% reported planning to use companion planting, smart plant, and container gardening to supplement their household food source. Research has shown that growing a garden can reduce the amount of money spent on groceries. So therefore, programming such as this is vital to assist our senior aged, low income, and food insecure clientele to supplement their food intake and save them money as well as improve their health through the consumption of homegrown healthy fruits and Now we'll talk about me as the 4-H agent. In Grant County, 4-H programming falls into two major categories, adult volunteer development and youth development. The issue, 4-H volunteers must be recruited, screened, selected, oriented, trained, supervised, evaluated, and recognized for a sustainable volunteer program. Increased retention of volunteers is a challenge. Adult leaders need options of how and when to be involved as their priorities regarding volunteer, personal, and work commitments change over time. Volunteer leaders need orientation and education about the organizational structure of 4-H, 4-H delivery modes, affirmative action, youth protection, risk management, enrollment procedures, and the essential elements of youth development, working with youth, leadership styles, leadership roles, 4-H projects, and local, state, and national and international 4-H opportunities. So our adult 4-H volunteers provide a significant amount of direct contact with our youth and are essential partners in the 4-H Youth Development Program for maintaining and expanding the 4-H program. So I developed a program in our adult, for our adult leaders on how to perform needs assessments within their clubs for programming needs. They also covered financial record keeping, club member retention, and recruitment, as well as understanding the impact of community service. The results of this program, 16 club leaders from five clubs were evaluated at the end of the program. 100% of leaders gained knowledge in performing needs assessments, club financial record keeping, club member retention and recruitment, and the impact of community service. We know from research that long-term relationships with caring adults are essential for positive youth development. The 4-H volunteer role is critical to the success of the program and in order to provide effective and impactful programming, adult 4-H volunteers must be trained in many different aspects of the 4-H program. So therefore, this program is valuable for adult 4-H volunteers, parents, families, youth members, and the community as a whole. Now we'll switch over to the youth side. The issue that we addressed, in 2019, the National Assessment of Educational Progress, only 35% of US fourth graders, 33% of eighth graders, and 20% of 12th graders are proficient in science. In 2019 school year, only 40% of New Mexico students in fourth, seventh, and 11th grades are proficient in science. Silver schools scored slightly higher than the state and national average at 40% proficiency in science. In Cobra schools, only 35% of students are proficient in science. And according to the National Science Foundation, success in this new information-based and highly technological society, students need to develop their capabilities in STEM to levels much beyond what was considered acceptable in the past. So with the use of workshops, clinics, and contest practices, youth were able to gain hands-on science education, learning the different digestive and skeletal systems of cattle, sheep, goats, and pigs, and how they function. Youth were also able to learn how to keep their livestock healthy throughout the year and how to treat minor health-related issues. Additionally, participants learned how to keep accurate records of their livestock projects, increasing their mathematical comprehension as well. These programs strengthened youth comprehension of science in a more practical manner. The results of the program, we had 150 youth participate and they were evaluated. 98% of the participants increased their comprehension of ruminant and monogastric digestive systems as well as skeletal anatomy for beef, sheep, swine, and goat species. 95% increased their knowledge in biosecurity, disease symptom diagnostics, proper medication calculations and applications, and withdrawal times. 91% increased their knowledge of record keeping, weight projections, and profit-loss statements. 88% increased comprehension of how to calculate feed and supplements for their livestock's diet. Research has shown that agricultural education courses provide the context and the content to help students be successful in STEM. So in order to improve student success in STEM areas, use of the 4-H program through hands-on education are valuable and vital to our youth. Some additional information that I wanted to provide today is as of April 2022, I was awarded by NMSU, New Mexico Cooperative Extension Service, and the Agriculture and Consumer and Environmental Sciences College a promotion to rank of Associate Professor and tenure. This process required documentation of all of my programmatic efforts over a six-year span. It is a prestigious ranking amongst my peers and a difficult goal that not all agents are able to achieve. Some other additional information, the cooperative extension services across the country and in New Mexico are struggling with extension agent retention. Agents are leaving the profession at a high rate. The retention of extension agents was identified as a challenge by the National Association of State Universities and Land Grant Colleges Extension Committee on Organization and Policy Leadership Advisory Council, otherwise known as Ecop. Low salaries, downsizing, and increased workload were identified by the Ecop LAC as factors negatively affecting employee turnover. This is a significant problem for cooperative extension nationally as increased burnout and staff turnover are monetarily expensive and an inefficient use of time management. There is a net cost of $80,000 per year to extension due to the turnover. Job stress is a condition prevalent among extension agents due, job stress is a condition prevalent to extension agents in multiple states. Factors such as overcommitment, continuous multitasking, and working late were statistically related to the amount of stress an agent experienced. Staff cuts and downsizing translate to increased workload and those, for those already overloaded. The average age of a cooperative extension agent is 40-plus years old, which represents 61% of the population. However, only 26% of those are 30 to 40 years old, which is where we are. The average cooperative extension agent stays in their job for one to two years for a percentage of 31%. However, only 15% stay for five to seven years, which is my category. We truly believe in the programs that we do and the impact that they make on our communities' lives. We invite you, your families, and your friends to take part in the impactful programming that the Extension Office offers. We hope that you will remember our value to this community for years to come. We will now answer any questions you might have on all the things.
Thank you. Do we have any questions, Commissioner?
I have a couple.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. And for presentation and your work, Lauren is for Ms. Baker. Welcome. Congratulations. I wasn't clear, this I think was listed as future programming, so you're not currently doing this?
So yeah, I just currently, I'm going to get your whole. I just currently got trained on that.
It's getting me a mobile headset.
I need one because I'm a mover and a shaker. And so now it's ready to implement in school systems. It's not for younger children, it's more junior high and up as well as adults.
Well, it looked great to me, so I hope, I hope you have success working with the schools.
It's very exciting.
I was impressed with the booklet. And for Jessica, just you may already have made this connection and I don't even know if you need it, but there's a Grant County Seed Library on your compo, okay. You're nodding, so.
Yes, your wife, Chris.
Yeah, I was going to tell you, I have an inside track if you.
Yeah, yeah, we've, we've discussed before about, since I drive from Cliff every day, I can pick up seeds from the seed library in Cliff and help transport and so yeah, we've made some connections.
Thank you for that.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Yeah, not to take up more time, but I'm interested in this program too. This is an interesting book. I think my heart doctor would really like me to have one of these.
You can keep it. You can keep it.
I can, really?
I'll front the bill on this one, Billy.
So how are you going to start this program and where's this going to be available in the schools?
So I want to reach out to La Plata first and then go to Cliff. I want it to be available to everywhere, all of our surrounding communities, not just in Silver City. But it's also something I would like to offer to adults through the Extension Office because it's not, everybody has a lot of stress during these times, so it's going to be a really good program to implement.
Yeah, I'm impressed with it. Thank you for letting me keep a copy.
You guys can actually hold on to them.
Thank you.
Thank you. You know what, if, just I guess one request, if I can get a copy of the slide of the poverty level and then the other part with the school, the stats on the schools for future, you know, I need to look at them in future use if you don't mind.
Yeah, I got it all.
You've got it all, thank you.
This is a copy of the slide presentation.
Oh, thank you.
As well copies of our, those impact statements and stats and stuff.
Thank you.
Yeah. I don't know, I have some extra copies.
You can put them in their boxes.
Yeah, we could, we could take care of that. Thank you. Anything, anything else, Mr. Chair?
No, thanks.
No, I don't think so.
Thank you guys and thanks for everything that you do. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
report, Mr. Banks. So moving on to, uh, next item on the agenda is gonna be a Gila Regional Medical Center report, Mr. Banks.
I think we're still on. So, I'm sure that, uh, the board is observant and has noticed that I am not Margie Molliter. She's unable to be with us today, um, but she's left a couple remarks for me to make on her behalf. I'll start with the CFO report, and, uh, somebody pointed out to me that I, you know, tended to present a lot of the same information and a lot of detail, um, in both our open board meeting and the commissioners' meeting. And so, I'm attempting today to, you know, distill our financial presentation to what I think is really important for the county to pay attention to. Um, you know, I want to maintain complete transparency, uh, to, you know, to every appropriate extent, so if you have any questions, you know, please feel free to ask. But I'd like to start by moving up and talking about our cash on hand. It's the number one financial metric that tells you, you know, at a glance whether the hospitals, um, solvent paying its bills, doing well, or whether there's something that needs to be corrected. This month, we're at a hundred and five days. Last month, we were at a hundred and six. I attribute that to timing, you know, we did well to maintain our cash balance. I will show you last year just to, you know, trend it over a little bit more time. And while we'd like to be at that hundred twenty-nine number, the reason it's down is some investments that we've made in the facility that we haven't recouped through grant funding yet. Uh, we do anticipate getting back up there later this year as our, uh, federal tax credit, that's the last of the COVID money clears the bank. And then the accountants would call this selected financial data instead of, you know, a full financial statement, but really, it's the key summary items from that financial statement, um, that, you know, tell you sort of big picture that we're continuing to, uh, you know, bill and collect for, for care. Uh, we're doing, you know, our, our operating revenue has gone up from last year, uh, largely with, you know, inflation and healthcare and our ability to collect more from insurers as a result. Uh, our operating loss is, uh, you know, just that, a loss this month. That's, um, you know, something that we monitor closely, but we have to continue investing in people. And right now, we're training thirteen nurses, most of them Grant Countyans and all of whom we hope to stick around for the long time. And so that, and, you know, that investment shows up in the P and L as extra labor hours. Happily, we're able to report a surplus, which is the most important number that you'll see here. That's the bottom line for the hospital. The hospital got financially stronger this month. Um, you know, with that, I'd, uh, you know, like to turn to, uh, you know, some remarks on behalf of the CEO, but before I go there, any questions on the numbers?
No, you know, and to me, I really appreciate the, the days of cash, because I think that for so long in Grant County, that's what people always looked at and relied on and understand a little bit better. And, uh, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Well, thank you. And again, our board meetings are also open meetings. And so, you know, if you're curious about all of the details here, uh, you know, certainly welcome to attend those. Um, so on behalf of Margie, who I don't think has been introduced formally, uh, in front of the county, she's on the left there, and she couldn't be with us today, uh, because of her travel schedule. I have been, been able to spend most of a month now with her, and, you know, I'm thrilled to say that she has an open-direct style. Um, she has, you know, she, she takes about five minutes to appreciate her humor and her amazing healthcare experience, both of which, you know, make me excited to work with her as my boss and, you know, confident that the hospital's in good hands. Um, I think you'll recognize Melanie, who's in the middle on the top, and Melanie The Hill's moving to Colorado, up to Pueblo, actually. Um, I know we had a CSU Pueblo attendee here a minute ago. And so she's going up with her husband and her three kids for an opportunity that they needed to, uh, you know, to move to take advantage of. She would, um, stand here herself and give all the credit to her team. So since she's not here, I have some freedom to say that her leadership has been a huge part of our success over the last year, and we wish her all the best. Below her in the, in the middle is, uh, Cynthia Lewis, and Cynthia just joined us as our interim CNO. Um, we're thrilled to bring her in because she has a ton of healthcare experience as a CNO, including experience in New Mexico as a CNO. And so she, um, you know, she's able to hit the ground running. And in addition, we're able to give her some overlap time with Melanie, so, um, you know, she has a really strong leadership team underneath her. Uh, we know she'll be well-supported. And I wanted to take the moment to, you know, introduce you to the new CNO at Gila Regional. Um, while I'm talking about people, we celebrated Employee Appreciation Day last Friday. We haven't done new shirts in a while, but we did a company-wide shirt. And so if you see somebody walking around with one of these, you know that's a healthcare employee. You know, oh, you wanna see the back too? There's words on the back. We've been using this motto for some time. So if you see a GMC'er around town, feel free to, uh, you know, express any appreciation. Um, if you have anything other than appreciation to express, administration is always open. You can find us there. And then the last thing for today, oops, is that this month, um, I won't be able to talk to the county again until, uh, April. The thirtieth is Doctors' Day. National Doctors' Day is a fabulous day to, you know, reflect on the fact that these folks spend a ton of time getting educated, um, a ton of time on call, you know, and pour their hearts and souls into keeping us healthy. So on, on March thirtieth, uh, later this month, if you, you know, if you happen to see a doctor, um, or if you're just thinking of one who's taking care of you, you know, we'd, we'd encourage you to express that same appreciation that we feel for these folks who keep our entire community healthy. Uh, that's all I have from the hospital. Any questions?
Question?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So moving on to next item of the agenda, it's gonna be elected official reports. Um, our treasurer, uh, Mr. Khan wasn't able to be here today. Uh, he did email the information to, to the commission. Uh, next person on the, um, agenda here is our sheriff, Raul Villanueva.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, um.
I just wanna present to you our report for the month of February. So during the month of February, we, uh, at the sheriff's office, uh, had a total calls of service of a thousand three hundred and thirty-six, which four hundred and fifty-five of them were dispatched, and eight hundred and eighty-one were self-initiated. Out of the, uh, out of those calls, we had twenty-three domestic violence calls. Uh, we did, uh, investigate one suicide, one attended death. We had forty-eight welfare checks. We had forty-eight animal complaints. We did investigate seventeen accidents without injury and two accidents with injury. Cases of interest for the sheriff's office that I just went over, on February fourth, two thousand twenty-three, Grant County Sheriff's deputies responded to shots fired, shots fired call in Arenas Valley. Upon arrival, deputies came across a maroon truck with juvenile occupants. Several weapons were found in the vehicle. While one of the juveniles being interviewed, juvenile had an odor of an alcoholic beverage and admitted to shooting his AR-15 rifle out of the vehicle. Grant County detectives were called and, and the vehicle was sealed and told to obtain a search warrant. Juveniles were released to their parent guardian, and charges were filed for shooting at or from a motor vehicle. Negligent use of a deadly weapon and mi- minor offense out to be served. Citations were filed with the juvenile probation office. No one was injured during this incident. On February thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three, Grant County Sheriff's deputies responded to a refugio in reference to a possible sexual assault that occurred the night before. Victim was in a vehicle driving in the area of Hurley at the night, at the night of the incident. Victim was with another couple who had been engaged in a domestic violence case, hitting each other. Victim did stay with the couple for the fear that something would happen to victim and victim's children. Victim and suspect ended up at the KOA campground where he forced himself upon victim beating, battering her in the process. She did sustain injuries, uh, where he did strangle her. This continues to be an active investigation by the Grant County Sheriff's Office detectives, and charges will be filed accordingly. On February twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three, sheriff's deputies responded to the area of Camino Polteca in reference to a suicide. Upon their arrival, deputies noticed the female administering CPR to a male subject that was unresponsive. Deputies took over continuing CPR while EMS was in route. Upon EMS arrival, they were attending the, to victim, but unfortunately were not able to help him, ultimately passing away. No foul play was found at the scene and ruled, uh, as a suicide. With respect to the family of the decedent, his name is not being released at this time. In regards to training, Grant County continues, sheriff's office continues to place high importance on training. Five cadets are performing while in the WNMU Police Academy program. ACO Jesse Phillips has completed the ACO one and ACU training successfully that was provided online by National Animal Care and Control Association. The month of February was a slow month for training, but looking to pick up by sending deputies to various trainings for this month. Chief Deputy Anthony Bencomo completed his certification by waiver packets one and two, looking to attend the New Mexico Law Enforcement Academy in April, that he can become certified. Annual by annual state mandated training will com- commence this fall. As always, GCSO is committed to working with our state and local law enforcement partners in providing this vital training locally, using local and in-house instructors. GCSO, GCSO is also committed to partnering with WNMU and the Police Academy program. In general, um, Operation Stone Garden for fiscal year twenty-two is completed and signed. We are just waiting for the approval from FEMA to continue doing operations in conjunction with Border Patrol near the international border. We expect fiscal year twenty-two to become active this month. Motor vehicle fleet, um, I have purchased four new vehicles with capital outlay funding, with two of them awaiting to be equipped and the other two waiting for arrival to be equipped. We are looking to having four vehicles fully equipped for patrol, hopefully within the next couple of months. The U.S. Forest Service contract, uh, patrol is now active, and GCSO will be conducting patrol work in the Gila National Forest within Grant County. New hires, the sheriff's office is currently in the process of doing background investigations on four potential new hires pending the outcome of the investigations. And suc- in success, new hires will attend the New Mexico Law Enforcement Academy in July. Their, their programming continues in area schools as the school year progresses for Cobre, Silver, and Calvary. Dates have been scheduled for Silver Schools and looking forward to a successful year. Personnel, uh, we did have an employee who had tested positive for COVID, but has returned to work with no health-related issues. No other employees were exposed. Uh, the recruiting and retention bonus was approved and looking to disperse the stipend by June thirtieth and again in July. There is still talk about several deputies looking for other employment due to the substantial bonus, incentive, and substantial pay increases they will receive, uh, responding or going to other agencies. Uh, with that being said, I did wanna mention to you guys that we have lost two other deputies within the last two weeks. Um, one, one, uh, retired and is gonna go work for the mine to make more money, and the other one is leaving to the state police to make a substantial amount of, of money. So I encourage you guys to please try and do something for these, for my staff, as, uh, this is gonna be impacting our community, and I feel that it is my responsibility to provide the public service that the public deserves, and I feel that we need to somehow move a little bit quicker before I lose more of these certified officers. It's hard to replace, they're hard to replace, and i- it, it's something that I do need help with, and I'm asking you guys to please try and do what you can. A special recognition, I would like to congratulate Lieutenant Manuel Madonado on his retirement for his years of service to the Grant County Sheriff's Office, and wish him well on his endeavors. I would like to recognize the staff at the Grant County Road Department for working diligently to keep GCSO on the road twenty-four-seven, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. And I would also like to express my thanks to my staff for the continuation of their hard work while being short-staffed and coming together as a team to help keep the citizens and community of Grant County safe. In regards to our Civil Process Division, um, for the month of February, we did serve fourteen DVOs, domestic violence orders. Uh, we did serve a hundred and seventy-five subpoenas and fifty-seven summons, and we did, uh, execute six writs of restitution. There were seven transports to the prisons and, uh, other facilities uh, within the month of February totaling an, an amount of four thousand four hundred and sixty-eight miles that was put in by our Civil Division to do these transports. Other than that, um, I don't have anything else to report unless you guys have any questions.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
So moving on to the next elected official report, our, our Grant County Assessor, Ms. Misty Trujillo.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is my first time here, so bear with me. If you don't mind, I would like to say a few things before I get into the assessor's report, if you're okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Just a couple things. I wrote it down. First of all, I, me becoming the new assessor, I just wanna give my appreciation to my family for supporting me from day one, since the day that I said that I was gonna run as the assessor. So just want them to know, I love them. Next is my office. I just wanna show my appreciation to them, how much I appreciate them for accepting me as the new assessor. It's, it's, hasn't been anything different. It, it's, every day, it's the same process. I, I'm the same person as I was from day one, and they've accepted that. I wanna give a big thanks to Raul. You, as of now, you guys know that Raul is my deputy now, and I just wanna give him my appreciation too. If it wasn't for him, I would not be where I am right now. And he's the one that actually pushed me. Misty, run, run to be the assessor. You could do it. You have the experience. You could do it. I always said, "No, I'm not ready. I'm not ready." Well, I'm glad he pushed me. I'm, I'm actually, I'm really glad that he pushed me. Got me out of my comfort zone for sure, and hopefully good things happen. Next, I wanna thank the public. I wanna give the public my appreciation. I, I appreciate all your votes. I appreciate you allowing me to be the next assessor, just moving forward with the functions in the office. I really appreciate it. I just wanna let you guys know that my door is always open. Come talk to me whenever you want. Call me. If I can't answer the question, I will figure it out. I, I will figure out the answer for you and get back to you. I guarantee you that. Um, if I can, I wanna acknowledge my office. Um, as you all know, in the assessor's office, we are required by the State of New Mexico Property Tax Division to become certified appraisers. That is our goal. In order to do so, we are required to take four courses with the Double I double O, International Association of Assessing Officers, which includes the four courses. The Fundamentals of Real Property, the Income Approach Evaluation, Appraisal of Land, and Mass Appraisals. Well, with that being said, I actually have really great news. Um, in February, we, we had to close the office for some, the courses that, that I sent for appraisers to. Unfortunately, it was on a Zoom call. That's why we actually closed the office. Um, I didn't want to, but it, it was, it was the right thing to do. Um, all four appraisers actually passed a course, so I want to acknowledge them. And Jerry Paul, Albert Castro, Audra Hernandez, and Brana Geary. They all passed, so I'm, I'm very proud of them. Also, I want to acknowledge another individual in my office. She is actually a certified appraiser now. She got certified in two thousand twenty-two under Raul. But because I am acknowledging my other employees, I, I have to acknowledge her. I just wanna let her know that how much, um, I appreciate her, everything that she's done, and very proud of her for her passing that course. Okay? And just to let you guys know that those courses, they're not easy. They're hard. It's, it's a lot of work. It's, it's a whole semester and four days. So it's, it's not easy. It's a, it's a lot. With that being said, I just wanted to show my appreciation to everybody. Going on to the assessor's office on what we're on the projects as of right now. In February, the end of February last month was the last day to render your rendition to our office, and what that is, it's, it's your, your livestock, your grazing exemption, your business personal property. The end of February was the last day. Are we still accepting renditions now? Yes, we will accept them. But just be aware that there is a five percent penalty tied to it because there was a deadline, and that deadline is a state statute. Right now, our biggest project that, that we are working on is the twenty twenty-three Notice of Values. So we are trying to get all the values in there, make sure everything's correct, before we send everything to the printing company. Right now, my deadline to get to them is March fifteenth. So, starting, we're starting now, just trying to clean up, do all our reports, whatever we have to do to, to clean up the system. I just wanna let the property owners know that April first is the day that the Notice of Values get mailed out. And it's a very important document. I, I can't stress that enough. I, every time I talk to the public, I stress it. Um, but it's a, it's a envelope that says important notice of value. This value will be a factor in determining your twenty twenty-three tax bill. And it just looks like this. This is the most important document that you wanna look at because this is letting you know what your taxes are gonna be based on come November when the Treasurer's Office sends it out. Okay? When you receive this Notice of Value, you actually have the thirty days to contest your property. And what I mean by that, if, if you have a name on there that shouldn't be on there, if your legal description is incorrect, if you have a value that just does not make any sense to you, you wanna come in and talk to us because we have that time period. And in order for us to change any values or anything on our system, we have to have that legal document because Property Tax Division, they review every change that we make. We're certifying our Notice of Values at this, and in order for us to make any changes, we have to have that, that protest filed in our office in order for us to make any changes. Okay? Another thing, this is the time, between the Notice of Value time, this is the time where you would want to request a veteran's exemption, head of household exemption, the sixty-five and older valuation freeze. With the sixty-five and older valuation freeze, it actually increased this year to forty thousand four hundred. Last year was thirty-five thousand. So that's up to the state if, if they're gonna increase it or not. This year they did. And, and what, with the valuation freeze, I, I wanna stress this enough, a lot to the public. If you're sixty-five and older, come in and talk to us. I can, um, sit you down with the appraiser that handles these valuations. Um, the only thing that you're gonna have to provide us is your last year's income, which would be the twenty twenty-two, in order to qualify for this exemption. Um, let's see, what else? I think.
While you're on that one, could you explain the forty thousand four hundred, what, what that level means?
Okay, so the forty thousand four hundred, that, that amount is based off of your gross income at the end of the year.
I see. So if you're under that, you qualify.
Yes.
For the exemption.
Yes.
That's what got raised.
And also, and I'm, and I'm glad you mentioned that too because I completely forgot about this. But yes, so your, your, we go off of your gross modified income. And that's, if it's under that, then you would qualify for this exemption. And just be aware, um, because we, we get a lot of property owners coming in when they receive their tax bill. And I don't wanna go into much with Patrick, but I, with, when they receive their tax bill, they come in asking, "Well, why did it increase? Why didn't, why didn't my taxes go up?" Okay, so in the Assessor's Office, we do not control the tax bill. We control the valuation only. So if you apply for this exemption, it freezes your value. Um, what the public needs to understand that is that whenever we get the tax rates from Santa Fe, that is letting, that, that's gonna determine if your tax, what your tax bill is gonna be, be either up or down. So depending on the tax rate every year, it's high and low. It's always adjusting. We have the control of, of the value only. Okay, just so that you're aware of that. Okay? And then also to, to do with the sixty-five and older valuation freeze, we have an application. We apply, we attach this to the application every year. A lot of the property owners do not even file their income tax at the end of the year, which is fine. That, that's fine. But with the A A R P tax help, we wanna, we're stressing it for them to apply for it because there could be some rebates that they can get back. They might get some money back. So we just apply, we attach this to the application as well, just to help them out. And, let's see, am I missing something? I think I am. So as, as far as the Notice of Value, that's just, I please, if I can stress it, um, if you have questions on it, if you feel there's something wrong with it, if you purchased a property at this amount and you're seeing your Notice of Value at a different amount, there's a reason. There, there's a reason for that, so you would have to come in and just talk to us. Okay? Other than that, I wanna let, um, everybody know that actually next week, I'm sending three more appraisers to go take another course because the state offered it again. So I will be sending, um, Jerry Paul, Brana Gary, and Audra Hernandez. After this, this course, Jerry Paul will be certified. He will be certified. So we just have a couple more to go. Other than that, um, I don't have anything else. I stand for questions.
Thank you. Commissioners, anything else? No. Commissioner Brown?
Thank you, Misty, and congratulations. Welcome to the meetings.
Thank you.
Let's see, a couple items that I think are, are real important for us, uh, and these are long-term things. I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but just for future reports, uh, one of them that I was particularly interested in, Matthew James, before he left, was, at least he told us, he was working on, um, getting the data and maybe the training and certifications in place that were needed to use a statistical analysis to increase valuations sort of across the board without having to do individual property by property assessments. Is that something that your office is still working on?
We, yes, we are. I- it's just that that, when, when Matthew put it all together, there, there's a lot more to it. We have, uh, I'm gonna say more or less about two thousand more accounts that have to be fixed.
Two thousand.
And, and we're, we're getting them as we go because everybody has their job that has to be done and we have to get so much done that's required by the state. So that's where we're hurting right now. We're getting them though. We're cleaning them up. Once they're done, actually right now, what we are working on, which is our biggest project right now, is our land study. And that's across the board. So twenty twenty-four, so in twenty twenty-four, all land values will be adjusted. And that's a big project with the state right now because they're, they're, they're wanting to know what's going on with the land values. Well, with the land values, because this isn't a, we're, I know they're trying to pass the disclosure right now. I know it's going through, I, I hope it does because that's gonna make our job a lot easier. Because we don't have that information, it's for non-residential properties, they do not have to disclose it and it's very hard for us to come up with the value. But twenty twenty-four, it will be done. So that's gonna be value across the board. It's gonna be changing all accounts to what they need to be to.
Okay.
And then to answer your question on the, the other portion of it, we will be doing it as well.
Great.
Okay.
Thanks, Misty.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You, you good?
Yeah, good, thanks.
Thank you. Thanks a lot. You know what? We're gonna, what I noticed, or, we're gonna start getting into our action items, so I'd like to take a five-minute recess because, so we don't break up the quorum once we get into the action items. Um, so if you wanna take a five-minute recess. Okay, I'll call this, uh, meeting back to order. Next item of the agenda is gonna be approval of meetings. We have, uh, under G, February nine, twenty twenty-three work session slash regular meet, uh, meeting minutes. And then we have February twenty-first, twenty twenty-three special meeting minutes.
Mr. Chair, move approval as he presented.
Uh, and I, I'm, since I wasn't here for the twenty-one meeting, perhaps we can do them in separate motions, um, although then, do we have a quorum if I abstain?
No.
I have no problem voting for him. I just wasn't here. I'll just acknowledge that.
So I'll second the motion.
Perfect, perfect.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Moving on to financial reports, consideration of March second, twenty twenty-three expenditure report.
Chair, move approval of the report presented.
So I have a motion by Commissioner Brown, second by Commissioner Billings. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Um, under new business, we have item J, consideration of, uh, twenty twenty-two volunteer firefighters annual report for P R A. This is gonna include Gila Cliff, Fort Bear, Santa Rita, Lower Mimbres, Buenos Aires, Sapien Creek, Tyrone, Upper Mimbres, and Whiskey Creek.
Mr. Chair, move to approve, uh, the volunteer firefighters annual reporting.
I'll second for discussion. I had in my head, we were waiting for the actual report, no? Is that a different item that I'm thinking of?
This is just a regular, the P R A.
Yeah.
Forms.
I will assume they were all done properly. I've not seen them here. Do you see them? Okay. That is so weird. They didn't show up online. Okay.
So did you second, right?
Yeah, I did second.
Okay, so I have a motion by Commissioner Billings, second by Commissioner Brown. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to item K, consideration of asset deletion transfer request number five.
Chair, move approval of request number five as presented.
Second.
Uh, motion by Commissioner Brown, I was second by Commissioner Billings. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to item L, consideration of N R C S E W P program sponsor, god, sponsorship? So, so we can go into discussion. I don't know if I'll get a second or not, but, um, I'd like to make a motion to approv, approve joint sponsorship with the Grant County Soil and Water Conservation District for the E W P program. With the stipulation staff will coordinate execution of the program with the Soil and Water Conservation District.
I'll second that.
So I have a motion by me, second by Commissioner Billings. Discussion.
I was happy to see Mr. Hunt say they would take our responsibility. I don't know if you have any details you wanna share with us?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I did have a telephone conversation Tuesday afternoon with Mr. Hunt. And we discussed what a potential partnership would look like. Uh, he expressed to me on the phone exactly what he told you this morning. We just have to figure out, uh, what those details will look like, who will do what. Um, they are very interested in taking the lead role. We do have a meeting scheduled Monday afternoon, uh, with Soil and Water, myself, Justin, and Aaron Reynolds, who was here on Tuesday, and he will help walk us through the process and what makes the most sense. There are, I don't know if you had a chance to look at the spreadsheet that Justin sent you. There were two tabs on there. If you, if you looked at the second tab, you will see that some of those items on there will require some cash. Um, it's not that we can do everything in kind. Um, some of that would definitely take some road department staff to accomplish. But with the Soil and Water Conservation District taking the lead, um, they expressed, uh, interest in being the fiscal agent, working with the landowners, implementing the, um, any agreements, that sort of thing. And then as Mr. Reynolds mentioned, they can provide, uh, the technical expertise and funding for that. So that puts my mind at a little more ease, um, because we don't have that capacity here. So I, I feel comfortable moving forward jointly. And of course, anything that we, um, anything that, any sort of agreement will come back to you. But, um, also want to reiterate that this has been funded. Um, there is three million dollars that is, that is, um, allocated for damages in Grant County, so I think we need to take advantage of that.
So, uh, yeah, I agree completely that we need to do that. I'm wondering if you have an estimate for how much we'll be putting out waiting for reimbursement?
I can't answer that because I don't know at this point how, out of the sixty property owners, how many of them would be able to, to do the work themselves. So I, I can't give you that answer today.
So I do have a question. So it would be our intent then, or your intent, that some of the property owners would do their own in-kind match or perhaps financial match then?
I don't know that there'll be many of them that would be able to come up with a financial match. I, I don't know. I can't speak for them, but, you know, they're, they're strapped because they've already had other damages that they've put out of pocket. I don't know about that, but I, I would anticipate, um, in my conversation with Mr. Hunt, he anticipates that many of them would be willing to do some of that debris removal on their own.
So I guess my final question is then, where does the county get the money to come up with the balance?
So one of the, the things that we're looking at is, uh, if Senate Bill three, three, four passes, there's not any specific language type to how that can be used. I'm trying, I have a phone call in to try to determine whether or not we could use that as part of our match. So that's the, uh, bill that was jointly introduced by Senator Hempel and Senator Diamond that appropriates three million dollars for damages to the block fire to Sierra, Grant, and, uh, Catron Counties. The language in the bill is vague, um, doesn't specify. It just is tied to block fire damages, which that's exactly what we're talking about.
Right.
But I'm trying to receive some more clarification on that. Um, like I said, I, I would, I would attempt to do as much of this in-kind through our road department as possible, even though they are completely stretched then at this point. But I think we have to continue to support these residents that are in pretty dire streets right now. Um, as far as any cash, we would be looking at, um, potential dollars that we have within our budget.
Okay, thank you.
You know, you know, the, the comment you made that stretching our road department, I know that I put a lot of thought into this because I don't think this is the last time Grant County is gonna go through something like this. I think that, uh, you know, I'm not sure what year, when, there were some cuts made in our road department. Hasn't been brought back up to, uh, the manpower. You know, so when you start hearing, you know, in-kind and all that, I would really love for, and this is just food for thought, is that our road department be somehow, somewhere, be brought back up to, you know, its staffing levels. That way we can continue business of what we need to with our roads and, and et cetera, but we also, or the road department also has a flexibility to be able to spare a person or two to start helping with a lot of this in-kind. So I think down the road, we really need to look at that and, and try to get back to the basics of what we need because, you know, in-kind sounds easy, but at the end of the day, manpower plays a lot into, into that. That's just my food for thought, but you can go from there.
So according to the motion that we're voting on, are we, are, is, will the, will the county manager come back to us to let us know how much the county's gonna be on the hook for, or are we giving her authority to move forward?
Well, I'm, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
No, well, well, you think I'll go ahead. I, I think, you know, down the road, there's probably gonna be M O Us, et cetera, J P As, whatever you wanna call them, coming back to us. So I think my motion is just to start this process while our county manager is able to figure out a lot of this stuff. And then we can discuss the M O Us, whatever it may be during that time, correct?
So before there's any money that's expended on the county's part, I would bring that back to you. And unfortunately, we don't know what that is, so that would have to come to you on, I don't know, a monthly basis, or, you know, we may end up having special meetings. I don't know. Because we only are on, we're only responsible for the work that's being done. So if, for instance, not all sixty landowners choose to participate in the program, then we don't expend all of, all of the money. So it's just gonna depend on. So it's just gonna depend on how those projects move forward. So I can't tell you today what that would look like. But I'm not gonna go there without your approval.
And the project man, sorry, I just keep asking questions. The prop, prop, uh, the project manager would, where would the funding be come from? And, and is that Soil and Water that provides that project manager?
So what I understand from Mr. Reynolds is that is funding that can come through EWP to provide that piece. And, um, it's my understanding from Soil and Water that they would be the one that would help identify that person or, um, utilize one of their staff to do that.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with it, I, I have a slight worry that there's gonna be a holdup with some project because you won't have a chance to come back to us to approve some money. And, uh, if that's a possibility, then I'd be willing to think about approving some, you know, nominal amount so you can move forward, uh, if you need approval. Or maybe it's in the budget in a place you can draw from already and we don't have to approve a small amount.
So we have the LETCF funding, this would be my logical place to go to for that. Um, we can't use federal dollars to match federal dollars. Uh, and this is a federal program through the state, so ARPA is not an option.
Okay, there was some federal program that I thought we were allowed to use, I thought it was even ARPA that got funneled through the state, so they were gonna count it as state? Am I remembering that right?
I, I don't feel completely comfortable doing that because there's, now there's some issues that are arising, that there's some questions that some other counties have brought forward about, um, ARPA dollars. Um, the others pretty open as to what we can use it for, basically anything other than lobbying.
So you don't need us to make any kind of authorization now?
I think I would rather wait and come back to you after, um, after we meet on Monday. Perhaps I add something to our special meeting agenda on the twenty-first. I'll have a better understanding of what that's gonna look like. I, I think it's a little premature today, if you're okay with that.
Yeah, yeah, if you are, sure.
We just need, um, we just need your, um, your permission to move forward so Aaron can start drafting the agreements. And then that's what I'll bring back to you, and Soil and Water will take that to their board.
Thanks for working with Dusty.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Motion, uh, no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Moving on to item M, consideration, uh, consideration of proposal for re-roof of the Grant County Veterans Memorial Business and Conference Center.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the re-roofing proposal.
Do you need to include in this motion the source of the funding?
Yes.
Do you want to specify ARPA?
Yeah, from, uh, yeah, so I'll amend my motion to include, uh, that the funding will come from ARPA.
I'll second the motion.
I have, uh, motion by Commissioner Billings, now a second by Commissioner Brown, do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Moving on to item N, consideration of ARPA allocation request for construction of a holding room at the Grant County Courthouse.
Mr. Chair, move approval of the request to use ARPA funds for the amount of seventy-five hundred dollars for the courthouse holding room.
Second.
So I have a motion by Commissioner Brown, I have a second by Commissioner Billings, do we have any discussion? No discussion? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Moving on to agreements, under O, consideration of Mimbres Senior Center lease agreement with HMS. Under P, we have consideration of Hila Senior Center lease agreement with HMS. I don't know if you guys wanna combine them both, since it's about the same thing, or you wanna tackle them individually?
Sure, I'll approve it. Uh, I will move that we approve the, uh, leases, senior center leases at both Hila and Mimbres with HMS.
Second the motion.
So I have a motion by Commissioner Brown, second by Commissioner Brown, do we have any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Moving on to, next item is gonna be consideration of agreement with Roddy Law Firm for bond counsel services.
That's the one we're waiting for.
Yes. Uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, um, when I did receive the agreement which Ben has reviewed, it's within my signing authority, so it's not necessary for you to approve it. Unless you just want to, but it's something that I can sign, it's less than twenty thousand.
Chair, move we table item Q.
Second. If that's what we wanna do.
Skip it.
Tabling it.
Is there a third version to skip it?
Is there a way to take it off the agenda?
If you table it indefinitely, then I'll just sign it.
That's what I figured I was doing.
Okay, yeah.
Just table it indefinitely?
Yeah.
Can you amend your motion to that?
Chair, move indefinitely table item Q.
Second.
So I have a motion by Commissioner Brown, I have a second by Commissioner Billings, do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion, tableed indefinitely. Resolutions, um, consideration of resolution number R dash twenty-three dash twenty-one. It's for twenty twenty-three Grant County maintain, maintain roads.
Give me just a moment.
Yeah, me too.
Thanks.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the resolution for Grant County maintain roads for six hundred eighty-seven point eight seven miles of roads in Grant County. Is there anything else I need to add to that?
Did I get lost? I did.
So I have a motion by Commissioner Billings, second by Commissioner Brown. Do we have any discussion?
The only change was the Bald Knoll Road vacation, right?
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next item is gonna be consideration of resolution number R dash twenty-three dash twenty-two. It's a notice of intent to consider ordinance number zero, I mean, O dash twenty-three dash zero-three.
Mr. Chair, move approval of resolution R twenty-three twenty-two?
I'll second that.
So I have a motion by Commissioner Brown, second by Commissioner Billings, do we have any discussion?
This is a motion for wire, uh, it's a resolution, uh, for wireless telecommunication facilities, uh, regulating the signing and permitting of wireless communication facility.
And, and it's basically a notice of intent to approve an ordinance. So we will hear this ordinance on April thirteenth, uh, for approval. So this is just our intent to hear that ordinance.
Correct.
To start the process for ordinance. Yes, sir. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Moving on to the next item, it would be consideration of resolution number R dash twenty-three dash twenty-three. It's gonna be the Colonias Infrastructure Fund Application Authorization for Crumb Road Improvements Planning and Design as amended. I can make a motion to that?
To just?
To approve and, and see a mo, uh, the motion?
Second.
So I have a second by Commissioner Brown, do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Moving on to the next item under resolutions, consideration of resolution number R dash twenty-three dash twenty-four. It's a budget adjustment request amending FY twenty twenty-three approved budget.
I move approval of the budget adjustment request as presented.
Second.
So I have a motion by Commissioner Brown, I have a second by Commissioner Billings, do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. If I can have a motion to recess as the Grant County Board of Commissioners and convene as the Grant County Health Care Claims Board?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Billings, second by Commissioner Brown, discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so we are the Grant County Health Care Claims Board. So under item B, consideration of January twenty twenty-three indigent health claims for recommended approval in the amount of three thousand, six hundred forty-two dollars and seventy-five cents?
So move.
Second.
So a motion by Commissioner Brown, second by Commissioner Billings, discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Under J, consideration of February twenty twenty-three indigent health claims for recommended approval in the amount of two hundred fifty-four dollars and ninety-five cents?
Uh, so move.
Second. So I have a motion by Commissioner Brown, second by Commissioner Ponce, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Moving on to the next item, it's gonna be consideration of February twenty twenty-three indigent burial claim for the recommended approval in the amount of six hundred dollars.
So move to approve.
Second. So a motion by Commissioner Billings, second by Commissioner Brown, do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. If I can have a motion to adjourn as the Grant County Health Care Claims Board and reconvene as a Grant County Board of Commissioners?
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
We're back as commissioners. Under Commissioner Reports, um, do we, Commissioner Billings, do you have a report?
Um, not today, thank you.
Commissioner Brown?
No, sir.
Commissioner me, no, no report. So before we go, we have an executive session, but before we go there, I just wanted for the record that only items on the agenda were discussed and no action were, was taken in the executive session of March seventh, two thousand twenty-three. Moving on, if I can have a motion to go into executive session in accordance with NMSA nineteen seventy-eight, ten dash fifteen dash one, H eight, and it'd be discussing, uh, real property under the NMSA nineteen seventy-eight section, again, ten fifteen one, H eight.
I move we go into closed session for that purpose.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner, uh, Brown, a second by Commissioner Billings, any discussion? You know, I can't go back, I forgot something that I was, wanted to bring up, but it's gone, so, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Madam Clerk, can I have a roll call, please?
Uh, Commissioner Billings, Chairman Ponce, and Commissioner Brown, are you all aware that you will be in tree and executive session?
Yes.
Yes.